Thank you so much for the blessings that you bestowed on our community. We ask for special blessings to our community over this holiday season. Please keep everyone safe as they travel to and fro, and we ask for you to pass and direct our citizens to the right.
........................
........................
............ And right now, most local, to be directly said differently, I think there'd be kind of three different buckets of where we are today. First is the business update on the company broadly. Second is on the project here in Bainbridge. The status update I have to presume is the most important on the agenda for you all. And then the third is the capital raising that's required for all of that. And so, and I'm happy to take questions, of course, as well, but that's during or after. This is interrupting. And I do have a tendency to speak very fast, so please, you know, probably slow down a bit, I think. So, the business update, I guess, well, it started, I guess, in May of this past year, the, you might not recall, but the Biden administration announced in May that they were going to grant waivers to the industry, the auto motor industry, for the implementation of the official reduction act, that would basically exclude graphite from calculations until 2027. So, that, of course, had a pretty material impact on our timing of what we were, our whole business model. There was a silver lining in those, I'll give you a second, if I talk about Bainbridge project. But I guess, the bad news is that that point pushed our whole business model to the right, which required us to then start raising a different kind of capital, which I'll get to in the third bucket. But that was in May. And then, at the same time, I guess, the good news on that for us is that they also started implementing the tariffs that were on the books in the Trump, first Trump administration in, that they were, I think, in 2019. And the 25% tariffs started being charged in June of this past year, which means that the market, the customers, the, you know, the auto motor customers, or the battery makers, guys like, you know, LG or SK or Panasonic, are getting used to kind of paying, you know, a different price than what they had in the country before. So, what does that mean from where we are? Our, our business, as you might remember, is, is a startup, but it's based off a technology that's pretty old. It's actually a technology that the Chinese, I guess, say, commented about thirty years ago. And so, we are restoring that technology. It's actually technology that's embedded in Niagara Falls, here in the United States. And so, we're improving upon it. The Chinese were, you know, improvements were, but nonetheless, it's not quite a technology risk kind of, kind of a company. So, it's a, you know, technology around a long, long time, used largely for other, other purposes, like electric arc furnaces and the single making process, for example, was a, was a big end market for a long time. What the Chinese discovered about twenty-five years ago was that the only way to really scale up synthetic graphite production, for the kinds of volumes that have been required for, not just a much vehicle, but also for energy storage systems, the only way for batteries, it was kind of like the key word, is, is, is this, that's the, that's how the production process. And so, that's the technology, the first technology that we use to just, you know, appreciate. The nuance, there's two key things about the production process that are important for you all to understand why, that we'll get into the technical updates. One, it requires a lot of power. As you guys remember, you know, we're working towards power to put in a hundred and fifty megawatt substation, possibly two hundred megawatts over time, if we expand even further. And the reason for that, that amount of power need is that the furnace is at over three thousand degrees Celsius or over five thousand degrees Fahrenheit, which is about, I think, half the temperature of the sun. So, really, really hot. And so, what, what that means, though, is that the furnaces go to these kinds of levels for about four days, and then it takes about twenty-five or thirty days to cool. So, every time we do a sample, and now I'll segue now, because I think the current update, every time we sample, it's a thirty-day minimum cycle time, oftentimes like forty-five days, because there's different pieces of the, of the process are being done in, to, to, and then they're delivered into our, our, our pilot facility at Niagara Falls. And so, what we took with all of the 2024 has been focused on this capital qualification. All of the customers, you know, LG, SK, Panasonic, et cetera, all require that we, that we pass through certain barriers of performance and battery, battery material. And so, today, I guess, the good news is that, you know, I guess, the last twelve months or so, we're through five of the six key parameters with the major battery makers, which means that we're really down to one more major parameter, which you'd think could be done as soon as January, like that sample, or the March sample, on the, that we're scheduling. And it's once we have those, that type of qualification done with the customers, that we then can, can then ensure these conversations about commercial contracts or often the business, the buying commitments from them, which, of course, would then trigger our ability to get the kind of capital we build the facility in Bainbridge. And so, I guess, to sum up where we are on the technical side, and this is, I think, the really, really good news, is that in August, we discovered from LG that we're actually being considered for a proper swap of the Chinese graphite. Our, our, so many companies could be on the next platform, for the next generation of stuff that was coming to the United States. We don't bring us through such a winter that, 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 that we're basically replacing our body for their existing suppliers out of China. That's a, that's a, that's a, that's a, through all this, we can actually have product or volumes pretty quickly, once we're in production. And so, and so, what, what does that ultimately mean? Today, we're probably, I'll use a metaphor, so my apologies, with ninth inning, those remind us with the Koreans, and eighth inning with the Japanese, and seventh inning with everybody else. And the other good news is that we have about nine thousand tons, which is about half of the first, sorry, about quarter of the first facility there at Bainbridge, about half of the first major phase, about nine thousand tons of letters of intent from various customers that aren't the big guys. And those, those are, that's important volume for us, because it's tends to be higher, a higher margin product, but the bad news is that there are also purchase orders out of the contracts. So, it's not quite a dead with demands against them, where we can contract with the big guys. So, the business is going well, but again, cycle times pushed us now to, on the process of the data collections pushed us to, hopefully, you know, January or the March samples, and then often believe those are contracts soon thereafter. Go ahead, break up each one, what that means sadly, but we, we, we manage this, we just count once after you have type of qualification, that we can enter the contracts. There's some things that we're working on, one that will get announced tomorrow morning, that we think will accelerate that, that desire by the customers to really kind of get going on some of this stuff. So, so the business, I think, is going well, and we're, and, and we're making progress. The project in Bainbridge, I guess, I'll come back to the silver lining I alluded to before, about the Biden administration announcing that in summer, by, by, by being that waiver to test the, to the markets, to the auto motor customers and battery makers until 2027, the silver lining was that that meant we could actually look at our balance sheet again, and actually, you know, build the balance sheet, you know, more appropriately than just kind of what we can get some. And so, and so, and at the same time, what we did is begin in July, is that we started developing what we're calling a mini-vil concept, unlike a steel mini-vil, but it's just, I like saying better than the pilot plant, because bigger than pilot plant, smaller than our full production. But that's, that, that's a concept that we developed, so that we can build, basically, our first commercial line in Bainbridge faster, and it's, it's, it's been one line to start, and it's, it's smaller than what, than what it would be at the full scale, but the bigger, it's still full-scale equipment, so that we can actually get through, you know, all the remaining pieces of the technical qualifications and what have you before commissioning the plant. And so, we think that, that by doing this mini-vil concept, we can actually de-risk the commission of the overall plants, because we can actually commission that first line first. And the other thing it does for us is it gives us a small line to separate revenue off of more quickly. And so, but, but that line allows us, for the long term, to do that, is actually feed all our small volumes, which are hopefully higher margin, which is to actually make that line more profitable, and have, actually have that line itself be a, a financeable project. And so, the way that we're now thinking about Bainbridge is different than the original plant, is a phase, and it's, it's called three phases. One is this mini-vil concept where we build a thousand tons, it's probably only about thirty or forty people, so it's obviously a fraction of what we're talking about long term. The second phase is the first half of the first facilities, so twenty thousand tons. That's about, the first phase, mini-vil's about a hundred to one hundred and thirty million dollars of capital. The second phase is the twenty thousand tons, that's about five hundred, five hundred and fifty million dollars of capital. And that gives us a, a big enough plant to both start putting all the things that we wanted to for all this, all this whole time, but also be profitable at a large scale. And at twenty thousand tons, you know, we're, we're definitely profitable, we're also able to accommodate a lot of volume requirements that a lot of customers are looking for. And then the full-scale plant, which followed about six months later, without any timeline. So, the hope is that we can get the mini-vil done, construction started by middle of this year, that, that should be done by middle, the middle of 2026. And then, and then the full plant, depending on the substation work, that the, you get done in, in, in the early, early half of 2027, for the first twenty thousand tons, and then by the end of the year, full forty thousand tons. The hope is that we can be in full production by one one twenty eight.
How is that equated to the former?
So, that, so that, it's at that level, that forty thousand tons, where we have that four hundred, five hundred people.
But how many would be mini-vil?
Oh, so mini-vil would be thirty or forty people, and then, then the twenty thousand tons, it's probably not mini-vil, it's probably like, you know, two hundred and fifty over four hundred, and then the, and then the, the full forty thousand.
It would be not mini-vil.
Yeah. And so, and so, and so, it will be, in a good way, we, you know, allow us to start training people on the, on this, on this mini-vil concept, and get used to being the reps on the big, on the full-scale equipment, so that we, it makes the whole, you know, the big facility.
Using full-scale equipment, is that name was final, it's still thirty-four percent?
Unfortunately, that, that's just me, so the technology, graphite, change track, but we're gonna have, unlike the mini-vil concept, expecting two, two furnaces, the, we made, the big plant will have twenty-eight furnaces, to basically have constantly, you know, normally using one or two of them for four days.
From our, your staff.
Constantly in, in, in development.
I got you.
So, so the project, I think, again, that, we're, we're still right, none of us are happy about that either, I can guarantee it, especially for the guy that is equipped with the capital, for the most part. And so, that's kind of, so this is the last bucket, so, and I mentioned some of these numbers already, but the, the business itself today, our, our, our monthly burn is actually pretty manageable, I mean, I see them, it's still good, it's about a cool dollar, a million dollars a month. And so, and that kind of helps us get through all the, all the R and D, you know, have our team, you know, doing what they do. And, and so, we have enough runway, as we call it, on that, on that capital to get us through all of this next year, and I'm raising additional capital at my level, and the whole, the whole economy level, to take us in the first quarter of twenty-six or possibly four. And, and the reason why it's a little bit squishy is because we might not be at a punt, right? We might, we might actually be able to, if we can, in production, you know, or starting construction, by middle of this year, then they can talk about a different kind of capital, and that, we have access to, even after we have that runway for the next two or three years, and so, I'll just keep on raising more, for some reason, things got a little bit, you know, pushing ready. So, that, so that's going well, and I was, I was saying to Rick and the car earlier, that the, the fundraising market, which had been the bane of my existence for the last twenty-four, for the last twenty-four months, from around October first issue, before the election, it started feeling a little bit far out, and so, it's actually getting a little bit better. So, so, I, I've been, I think I've raised more, I've, I've holding company on hold in the last two months, I, I have the last twelve month. So, again, it feels good, it's still not where it was thirty-six months ago. So, that's the holding company where I sit with the capital, I, I call that the operating capital, the working capital. The second bucket of capital is, is, is sort of mini-vil, I, I think it's just a hundred to one hundred and thirty million dollars of capital need. We think that we'll have, there's a new Department of Defense program that launches in January for equity financing. We think we have, we might be able to tap into that for about half of that, that capital. So, so we, so we actually commenced a fundraising yesterday, sorry, today, with an investment banker, to raise another kind of fifty million dollars of mini-vil project capital. And by the way, if I overraise at the local level, that will help feed the mini-vil equity raise, if, 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 if enough to, 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 to feed that. And then the third one, which is, of course, the, 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 the first big wave of capital need for, for all the Bainbridge projects, is five, five hundred million dollars for the first half, that five hundred and fifty million dollars will come from two different sources. In October, we got a four hundred million dollar letter of intent from the Export Import Bank of the United States, they have a program that launched two years ago, called Make More in America, kind of just basically code for, to do some, actually show some stuff from China, to be qualified. And so, I said that, it isn't that far away. But, so that's four hundred million dollars at, at five fifty, and so that, or a hundred million dollars of equity capital, which, which, which we also, this, this new fund, this new fundraising that the bankers is part of with, that started today. And then, and then the, the last bit for the full project will be one of two different sources of capital. By then, which doesn't believe that we'll actually have a full lot of takeaways by then, we can actually get traditional project financing from, 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 or, or, there are, there's the Department of Energy program, that's on the loan programs office, which, which is also, also available, that is throughout the whole expansion part of the project. So, so we feel like, knowing, the, the whole, the whole mission at this point is to, is to get the business with that twenty thousand ton facility, but then, ratchet, you know, ratchet up even faster for that mini-vil concept, and that we can kind of get, you know, get, get everything going, get momentum going. So, that's, well, okay, then I noted, nothing, anything, the, the big picture's always changed, you know, I think, same number of jobs, same, same, I think, same, I think we're still tiny on the short line, spur coming up, I was, I was not even joking, but something I want to talk about, they're doing, they're marching today, we can make that, that's a whole, that's a whole new question.
Is your, is your project footprint, I'd say the same with the mini-vil and the second phase or a phase, I think it's already still happening, a hundred million, hundred, three hundred?
Yeah, yeah, it overall, it'll be about a million, I think it's a million one, maybe two square feet. The only question is whether the mini-vil is being some house, or, or, or part of the, or part of that footprint. It's not, it'd be part of the footprint, but I guess it'd be in the same room, really, because this is going to be much smaller furnaces, maybe you may, maybe you'll do it in a smaller, but it would be adjacent to it, that, that, of course.
So, how does your success in raising capital put you out on layer of work that you are doing right now, or still tactic, accomplish, impact for you to get started on the plane?
Yeah.
Which comes first, which comes in the A, or where are we in that process?
So, I've used the terms chicken and egg more in the last few years than I ever have. So, so, thank you for noticing, I guess. And of course, that, that is the answer. I mean, in order to get the kind of capital that we need, we have to get to the commitments, the buying commitments, the contracts of the customers, the contracts of the customers, we have, we have to not only get the technical qualification, but we have to be able to then have the facility commission. And so, that's what the chicken and egg comes in, is that how do you actually have a plant commission, on the one hand, but have, have a plant commission that actually get the contracts in first place? And so, that's why you think this first, first facility, the first half of the facility, you know, in Bainbridge, ends up being more equity-like. So, because the equity investors are gonna look at that differently, and that's why the Export Import Bank program, you know, I hope will be a boon for the opportunity, because you know, because that's not equity capital, it's definitely replacing equity capital. So, so, I guess, the answer to your question is, I feel pretty confident about the one fifty, I feel less confident about the five fifty, this is a big number for this part of the market, but that would be the, if I'm, if for some reason, you know, or, sorry, yeah, for some reason, that, that, you know, X and, X, X, Export Import Banks look longer on their, on their diligence or whatever, and we would just keep on raising equity capital. But, again, time-wise, you know, this, this first, it'd be, you know, a hundred million mini-vil, all fifty million of equity, our, our target is first half of this year, to have that raise, and then possibly have a one fifty raise as well, because that ideal role, because then we start the, 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 sorry, the, 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 the power part of the project, which for a long, steep time, concurrent to the mini-vil. Multi-dimensional.
And the question is, there was a, an extension on the offer, to, to the end of the year, and then how, how does that work with you all?
Yeah, we've worked with, with Rick and his team, and lawyers, so we're closing, I think, at the end of last, last, I got, you know, this morning, this afternoon, I think there's one or two remaining little issues, because we're just, we're, we're hoping that he was closed on the, on the project, and then, but there's some land contribution, I think, in there, that, that, that they wanted to pull back, basically, before we started, we actually started the construction, which is on central, but I think that, that everything seems to be on track to close, probably, probably, probably all, probably, actually.
You may, you'll be there, though?
Oh, I mean, we're gonna waste a lot of money on march.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, we appreciate you coming to do this update, I know we've all been interested, you know, in what's going on, and I'll get you there, so I would look forward to having you as a corporate partner.
Oh, we look forward to being there.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for that. I've never had any questions or something, now.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And this time, I will make a mention for the Lehman Brothers, the Second Chance Outreach Center, and I think, um, I'm going to, let's see, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to work. So, I'm sorry. I'm going to read this for you all, I'm going to look at this one, quickly. Whereas the Lehman Brotherhood's Second Chance Outreach Center will hold their annual Christmas celebration in 2025, Saturday, December twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, in the, at the Al, Ados Millipore Multipurpose Building, from three to six P M. And whereas, for the past eighteen years, several businesses, churches, families of solid mini-villers have supported the Lehman Brotherhood's Second Chance Outreach Center's annual Christmas celebration, whereas Lehman Brotherhood's Second Chance Outreach Center graciously provides the populous youth within the Kitter Cany, a delicious dinner with fellowship to ensure a great Christmas. And now, therefore, will be resolved that the mayor and the city council of City of Bainbridge do hereby proclaim that the Lehman Brothers Second Chance Outreach Center Inc. be commended for their efforts in making the youth positive production, productive citizens, and be it therefore resolved that the mayor and the city council of City of Bainbridge do hereby offer our continued support and encouragement to the Lehman Brotherhood Second Chance Outreach Center Inc. And witness thereof, I figure this, the mayor of City of Bainbridge do hereby set my hand and have cause the official seal to City of Bainbridge to be fixed this seventeenth day of December, to be your role. We appreciate your efforts and your work, Mayor. We have a consideration with adoption of this cemetery trust ordinance.
Last off, we introduced the draft of the cemetery trust, uh, a few months ago, to , you know, to, to, and, if you look at currently, the language, the city code is specifically for all city cemetery, and we're proposing to amend the city code to include all of the cemeteries, the ways we can lay down, but on general account, it will cover any non-cemetery, I'm sure. We'll also have, each cemetery will have its own individual accounting, that folks can go into, if they're, if they're, funds from general cemetery trust accounts are allowed to be transferred to the city's general fund for care maintenance, improvements, land acquisition, for any cemetery, but any fund for specific cemetery has to be used for project.
So, I mean, trust fees, you know, you, you know?
And the trustees are?
Trustees are all of you. Do we have others who have a question about this?
Can you describe what the cemetery trust ordinance is exactly?
It's a way for us to actually raise money, people will be able to donate money to the city, help their maintenance of this, of this cemetery for them to, specifically for specific cemeteries that are chief, so that then we have ways to repair or improve plots that might not have, and members anymore, to help take care of them, or things like that, so that for, for people to be able to donate money directly to a trust account, that can, that help improve some of those areas of, 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 of.
Thank you.
All right. I would question, have a motion on the ordinance, is that, I guess, this, this, sorry.
I'm going to give you the doctor revised language.
Motion to second to adopt the revised cemetery trust ordinance as presumed on Code of C A. If you come back up for electrical code, to, to, this sort of state is updating the state minimum electric code from the twenty-eight.
This sort of state is updating the state minimum electrical code, uh, from the 2018 version to the 2023 version. Uh, this meeting will be the formal introduction to amend the city of danger building coverage to reflect the 2023 national electrical code. So it's just an adoption of the state minimum code.
You mean you got to go through that? Do we have others that have questions about, um, adoption of this? A motion for the adoption of the, uh, national electrical code. Motion is second for the adoption of 2023 national elec- electrical code on code of say aye. You know, consideration for a street renaming.
I mean, it's certainly a show, uh, that's what I figured. Did you get through the 911 this transition, uh, to an actual, uh, month this time, because we work on it and working on it for about a year and a half or two. Um, this is going analog to this. And in the process, we started looking at all the data that we have, um, just as we were extensively in this, this project. And we found some problems with some of the data. Um, we, we worked, most of these work, we worked out ourselves. Uh, this one, however, required us to take some action. We have, what we found is we have two 800 blocks of Alice Street. And one on the north side around the stadium, and then we have one on the south side, um, you know, from Eastport, Warner. Uh, we're actually what eight town offices and, uh, you know, a lot of twelve off the road. So, two 800 blocks in this system, so one hasn't changed. The bad approach is is trying to have a lease residence. We've changed the number of businesses or changed, in this case, there's one address on the north side of the stadium. It was addressed off of Alice Street. So we didn't have all that. Um, the method we chose, I've actually gone and speak to the, to the folks that live there, uh, that's, uh, Ben and April Rich, April Five, Alice Street, I spoke with them, emailed a couple times. They wanted to send names as well. I had pulled up the Alice Street, which I stayed and drive. And they have, they have since submitted four different names for them to look at. At the twin rich drive, rich twin drive, twin drive, drive, and I don't know. I don't know if one of those is being spelled or not, I don't know, I'm just going with what people's terms mean. You'll also see in your packet, there is an email or a letter from Tommy Griffin, the 911 director, Reverend Danny Siedman, to avoid confusion with other similar names, the left drive, rich drive, the street. You know, like that. So, um, that is what we have before you. If you do choose to rename a section issue that would recommend the effect that it would be March 1st, that would give the richest time to get their furniture or get all these structures, a lot of things would still pay the cost. And they have to get that done, so. I mean, that, getting that stuff done, and you don't have to pull some service on this. I think March 1st is a fair, fair time for them to get all that done. Cross the success.
Good, good, you're right. Other person? You have a motion on this?
I'm looking at, also the street to Stadium Drive.
Motion is second to rename the street, uh, Stadium Drive on code of say aye. We have an intergovernmental agreement, um, to the Marshall Services, the City of.
Uh, for your field management requirements, if, uh, climax for martial services and all, everything that's called in the office, but, um, and as a member of that, uh, contract is coming in. You say your climax has already been used at the garden sign, this is the one, you know, you want to change that shit, the price. That's what we're using on our, okay. The original setup, um, so you discuss that and then you change it, um, in place. And it's always changed in the contract since the original contract.
I have a question about this, um, intergovernmental agreement. Have a motion on the intergovernmental agreement. Motion is second to adopt the inter, intergovernmental agreement for martial services with the city of climax on code of say aye. Have consideration of applying for this recognition for, uh.
Uh, running mission that's 2009, last year. And we had two items on the agenda, both conditional uses. The first item was, yes, it's, uh, Michael and Cheryl Miller, who are requesting a conditional use for an Airbnb at 270 Park Street. The property is 0.5 acres and it's only permanent residential six. The planning permission goes to approve that unanimously. And the second item was for, was by, uh, requested by Mr. John Keeler on behalf of the homeowner, uh, who's requesting a condition used to start the attached storage garage apartment. And really existing lot, a 340 in the Pennant Street. The property is 0.27 acres and it's only permanent residential nine. Planning permission goes to approve that unanimously.
I think I'm, or do you need to offer more? Got other questions? You have a motion on this?
I'm looking to order, accept the recommendations of the prime board.
Motion is second to accept the recognition of the prime board on code of say aye. Any others? And have a consideration of leases. If I'm, you've been in.
Mr. Renee, that's, I have that. Uh, several years ago, we entered into a leasing of our garbage trucks. That's five side move, uh, vehicles and three truckload vehicles. Um, and the reason for that was because we were setting money in terms of owning the vehicles versus the maintenance, um, compensation. Uh, to keep the vehicles running, we found that in the second year, it tends to, the maintenance tends to increase considerably. So we opted to, um, improve the, but enter the leases for these on a annual basis. The current lease, the view, that's one. So what we wanted to do is get this approved so that we can go ahead and evolve with that. I have been able to negotiate with, um, RDK so that they kept the lease payments the same for the coming year as they are in current year. The one caveat to that is that we would keep the existing trucks, keep them running. And if and when they have a problem, a technical problem, we'd totally fire them, we would, we would, uh, with the main event. And that, that opted to save us about $2,000, uh, per side owner and $2,500 per owner.
I think you have other questions? Motion is second to send a license, uh, on code of say aye. Bring the guy to the reception.
I'm, I'm pleased to ask, uh, Mr. Dwight Tomlin, he's at John Bennett Public Safety. An equally form, voluntary position for chaplain. Um, I think this is a word because officers are regularly exposed to traumatic events. And, um, they say that a normal person in their lifetime is exposed to a few events, but officers, they're generally exposed to a career to several hundred events. So this will help them by providing them with counseling and support and encouragement. Um, Mr. Tomlin has numerous credentials. But I'll start with a thing about him, uh, he's a Irish native. And now all, and all those lie in this, she's a Irish native. Uh, Dwight served 20 years in the Navy as a military police officer. He served as a chaplain in the military, one of two shifts, and had military police command assistance. Uh, while he was in the military, Mr. Tomlin started his training in ministry in 1996 in Virginia Beach. And he began his apostolic ministries. He served as beacon at two churches in the military. He was elevated to minister and associate pastor while serving at UBD's apostolic, apostolic ministries. Because, um, he served as pastor of a lot of real deliver ministries in Cincinnati, Herbert Beach, South Carolina. He served in a position on District 11 of the South East District of Europe. He was concentrated a bishop in 2012. Um, Mr. Tomlin worked four years in the Herbert Beach, South Carolina Police Department. He worked almost 10 years at a quarter town in the Police Department and was supervising chaplain of Herbert and the Indian Services. Because I always wanted to serve the people of this community and I met him a few years ago when he brought semi loaded goods down here and helped distribute it to the community. And he communicated with me, we became friends and talked several times and, um, it's just the right person. And, um, we're excited to be back to serve this community. Mark, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mark. I'm just, uh, have a words, I haven't had to do that in my city. Uh, but even here, very close years ago, probably 36 years ago, traveled hundreds of miles. I'm not a great, same thing about to be here in the world before we serve this community.
Thank you, thank you. Here appreciate you coming to do for our community and, uh, I know it'll be a great ministry for our officers for, and our recent art community as well, but appreciate your, um, and have a lot of mind for.
Thank you.
We're gonna have, we're actually without, uh, is it a presentation? You're good, Mr. Tomlin is welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Congressman, it's good to be here to send you, this is the division presentation for Blackish Public Safety. Keep in mind our retreat that we went there with something that's topic driven. And, uh, what I want to talk about tonight is a new community initiative that we have heard, um, from, and I'm in the city of language. And, um, Chief Al and myself will, will present this tonight. And it's gonna, it's gonna be regarding the soft ones in the city and the downtown zone and the parks area. So talking about current control zones, what we do and have done for years is, um, on the west side of the river, we have what we call the west side zone. And, uh, when you cross to the east side, you know, the shopping, you have the northern side. And then south of the shopping, you have the south side, that's all these, you know, flat river. And, um, over the years, we, things have changed. If you go back to the beginning of town, I was just all where we are now around the river. About years ago, there was, um, foot patrol around this area and then over the years, things grew and the zones grew. And they got bigger and, um, and so things moved away from downtown and they moved out into the city. We know that Blackish Public Safety used to be downtown and they moved out on each shopping street. Now we're near a stadium on the south side, the south zone. But, um, as things were, you had a control of those zones, moved out away from downtown. Downtown also declined at the time, but since 2019, in the last few years, downtown was really booming. Now they, um, it's really, really nice. Of course, we run four shifts, you're aware of that, where we have a captain and a sergeant and 46 officers. We have those officers out in those zones. So, uh, a couple of officers on the south side, an officer or two on the north side is needed. And an officer on the west side, and of course, the west side will help cover downtown if necessary, but particularly as some of the north side. So, this year, of course, players are seeing downtown in the year, uh, State of Georgia was in, or, uh, as, um, um, if you're looking at this and you're aware of this, you know, she's saying Roger, we've had over 50 new businesses or approximately 50 businesses, 40 residential, approximately 40 residential units downtown, approximately 225 jobs. So, what we believe is moving to now have a downtown zone and officer designated just downtown just to deal with this busy hustle. Uh, when you think of what's going on here around Little Spark and the Square and Chatham Park, Jenny Griffin Park, the other place. All that can be, can make a trail, that's what we're saying.
Uh, approximately, we had, uh, I was a focus about a reporter who, coincidentally, wanted to do a story about the growth, um, in language and put some problems that came along with that, though. So for the community police officers, you know, in college press, I tried to find someone to catch off. And we went to the developmental party and, um, I, I kind of tracked a long while to get this story. And next month, she tried to talk to people from language to get their intake on this. And the interesting thing was it took us approximately 30 to 45 minutes to find some of the phone pages. Because everyone who contacted us was from the region, but not from this area. And it would be, it's been some ice cream day in Chatham Park. And I remember people from Ohio City, Alabama, North Georgia, and they were just visiting. And then, which again, a credit to the success. And of course, a few more problems, you know, behind not the problems or concerns. So those concerns are, uh, stores, uh, restaurants and events require full express. So, um, what we were required to do is to protect, to sort of, to just be there, a presence for our people in our businesses. Um, takes apart, for example, um, busy everyday that is open. And here's an interesting, uh, problem, more successfully than we're anticipating. Uh, the river walk that you say daily, uh, I just go and enjoy it and have not been down there with having the out people. Um, the park, uh, tennis courts, the soccer fields, the disc golf and particular, um, all these areas bring in people from different places. The, uh, as far as the disc golf, uh, there are YouTube videos on a disc golf course. This gentleman who travels the country and he, um, raved out a sacrament in the nation to get this. And he said he had only talked to one other place, had only visited one other place recently that he's got. Um, the only negative thing was he said kind of, you're, you're kind of in a go, go. And the same thing was said about the, the mountain bike trail, you know, the park, um, that was fast and quick, wanted to go, which is fast, um, pretty much he said the same thing. Hey, if you're never in the middle of nowhere, you want to do this, you can stop in there and, and, again, that's the only thing. Um, what we've been doing basically is going, going through, uh, I want to go through, revisiting an old, um, old concept. And that is basically, um, community orgs, and again, all of this is due back to finding a place. Um, with technology, acquisition, um, a lot of places, police officers reduced to a hand and a car, going in one place to another. Um, it's grateful mobility and response time, lots of grateful making contact with people and have a relationship, daily relationships with people. What we want to do in downtown zone is get out, get into the stores, walk, talk with people, not only visitors, but also to our, our segments of business owners. For instance, um, business of downtown, I don't know that you were sometimes got the grass you can. And I said, well, in that case, you should talk to them, why? And it was a learning experience for both the government and the, a new problem. And they, uh, my response I got was business owners, so that's just for emergencies. No man, call them for anything, that's what they're there for. And that's the kind of the same as, uh, so foot patrol, the ATV, the side outside, uh, which is a good place as far as, you know, of course, my favorite, the E-Bike, uh, for mentally, the, uh, major trails and, uh, in those areas. And if you get to say, um, the foot of, um, Chatham Park, for instance, I can, I'd rather take the light down there. If you have anything that you should respond to, you can get that involved as well as the football, the meetings, and we'll go through that, you know.
Okay, if you look at the, um, map on the monitor, you can see the gray area, that's there, we're talking about. So it'll be four towns in language based on this line. It's downtown and it's park control zone. We have one, one officer that again, pretty much, um, 65 days a year. Uh, that's the area, site to town home, west of Scott, going to shopping. Because of course, where we are now, it is Chatham Park, it is out of Jenny Griffin Park, falls out here, all the way back to the tennis courts. Then it's that area, which is west of the 970. Now, one of the things I want to add is. Now, one of the things I want to add is, of course, I've talked to Chief Gladiator, Tommerville. But anyways, I was talking to him about, you know, Tommerville has a, you know, third robust downtown system, things are going on over there. And when he told me how they did things, which is similar to us is, they have one officer that's designated downtown, hugely third on Saturday, and he works nine to six. Uh, that is only twenty eight hours. That, that officer is downtown, he gets into a lot of these shops and communicates with the, um, those, um, business owners and the public and it's been really, really good for topics. And he, we, uh, city manager, Mr. Oliver, talk about digital ways to be this and, of course, we have four shifts and we can, of course, designate one officer from each shift. While they're working, take care of this, but anyways, all of this is over in the making and that's what we want to do going forward. If you was there, and this just shows, we got a few pictures, we'll, we'll close it out, but basically it creates positive energy for San Souza merchants and visitors. There's a, uh, thank you from the Paulie Live that is supposed to be on the internet. When our officer sits downtown, they did not check the San Souza, of course, that's small concern. Pretty much, you know, the ones. Okay, then, uh, does anybody have any questions about this new relationship, community mission?
No, I think that's good.
Well, I think.
Okay, appreciate that. Uh, we're not, perhaps, in consideration of alcohol, verified if you, if you.
Yes, sir, we are in receipt of fifty five alcohol beverage licenses renewals and renewals for twenty twenty five. And we're reporting new alcohol license application, new application is from Mr. Martinez Galvin, owner of Alisto Mexican Cantina LLC. Which is located at seven thirteen East Calhoun Street. Mr. Martinez Galvin is applying for law players consumption retail and wine consumption retail license. So, we have one due and fifty five renewals, uh, in your packet for you. And all of the renewals have been, uh, gone over by staff and public safety and everything is, uh, in line, recommended.
Just may I, there are two that have financial interest and if you handle those separately, please. The sun stop number three thirty and sun stop number four twenty five. That's account number thirteen sixty five and eighty, eighty one sixteen.
Have a motion on the remainder of the, um, alcohol beverage licenses on the list, um, and the, and the renewed. Um, there's clearly the two, um, part on this bench, what, you know, future, I want to pull the, off the, the separately, um, there. You want to know the off the application, that part of the note? Is it in there?
Yes.
Uh, I believe that someone put the number.
Uh, thirteen sixty nine.
You just want to pull that separately?
Yes.
So now we have, uh, the remainder. Have a motion on the remainder, I have a wish.
How many questions would you accept, the, um, once presented, except for the three that were pulled? I said.
Motion is second to approve alcohol licenses except for number, um, thirteen sixty five, eighty nine sixteen and thirteen sixty nine. If you handle it correctly, um, and they would say aye.
Aye.
Any others? Motion is. But this time we will, um, interclaimation for approval of the two from, this other sort of oil company, number thirteen sixty five and eighty nine sixteen. Like the, the crude, the crude oil of this bench. Motion is second to approve two from sun stop number thirteen sixty five or eighty nine sixteen. Motion is second on those that aye.
Aye.
Any others? Motion is. Now we have, uh, number thirteen sixty nine.
You know, I know we've had a conversation with, uh, um, negative feedback on that as well, so, um, you know, you know, bring it. The conversation, let's talk about it, we've reviewed it once and I believe that it's been, um, we've seen some results, I think. Um, Frank Green, I think, maybe the way you know, it hasn't gotten better downtown, um, or the businesses, the local businesses are still coming in, that's a still issue. On what's, um, what's happening downtown, so.
Yes, um, we still get, we're watching, uh, problems inside, outside, yeah. And, um, basically, there's still a lot of drinking, um, it's not inside business, it's outside of business. Um, the third time, I started getting, text messages, using, sorry, playing drive or marketing the story, and I called. I called the officers, I said, there's a gal, this is pretty hard, I called, are you guys downtown, where are you at? The captain told me they were at, the diner, yelling the fight. They, um, they're, 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 they're tracking from the, they're yelling to the diner, but there's additional traffic from out of town or another party that came into town. Yes, basically, once in a while, it gets really, really busy down there, there's a lot of people and they're not all, they're in there, but they're not going in the hood. Now, we do have, we have some talks in the hood, you know, that's happened, but, you know, this last weekend, you know, the issue about, you know, it's just. One out of every four, we get in some cute way, you know, in control, just a lot of people in lockdown, should be there, which we have to devote all our resources to that location, so. Of course, you know, we do have compliance and, um, and, you know, there are problems, you know, that's not every weekend.
So, would you say it has gotten better from last year or from that year?
No, it's just, I'm, in my mind, it's. No, it's, the, the compliance come in every few weekends, like once in a while, things get, there's a, a big crowd, there's music, somebody's probably in some DJ or some musician or whatever. And, uh, and it brings a lot of people and those people aren't from same language, I think, I think they're coming from Tallahassee, go to surrounding areas and you have several hundred people downtown.
And yet you, uh, recommend the approval of this, so, um, can you explain why we have it on this for approval if you want?
Well, yeah, I, well, that's. I, I, you know, just thinking that I feel like we should, because, you know, that's our job, to go out there and deal with issues, it's not every, every weekend. It's like once in a while and, you know, that's what we're getting paid to do.
And recognizing that you, that, uh, a license is, um, at least your, the capsule, but there are certain criteria that that is true.
Yes. Any other questions?
Um, I, you have a question?
It'd be easier, I'll be honest with you, it'd be easier if we didn't have to deal with the problem, but you know, that's what, that's what we're out here today and it's not every weekend.
No. And some of those people are not in, going into the establishment, they're just happening to be there, right?
Yes.
I got it.
I've got a question, have a motion on that, um, alcohol beverage licenses, we know. Yeah, because then we did not, uh, which. So, a motion for the mild, for a second. Do you think now you have a license for a person?
No, I'm changing.
Do you have a motion approval for a second? Do you have a motion is second for approval on Thursday, aye? Any others? Motion passes. This time we have a bid, Mr. Oliver.
Yes, sir, this is a bid to outfit our new public safety, uh, explorers that were approved, uh, last month. We had three bids, um, the first bid and the low bid was from the Blackland Communications Radar, AI Air Corpses for one hundred and eighty two thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. And the other bid, interceptor public safety, uh, Forsyth School, two hundred and one thousand one twelve oh four. And the third from Danes Supply Company, uh, rescue Georgia, two hundred and eight thousand, uh, forty seven dollars and eighty cents. This will outfit our ten public safety leaders.
Question about the bid?
I believe they would accept the bid. Second.
Motion is second to accept the bid on Thursday, aye. Now, if it's skipped over, I think we have to approve, uh, two mineral appointment, one is their reappointment with Chair Hall and Development Authority. The other is the appointment of Gerald Hall, I'm related to, uh, front reaction of. After your approval, most two mineral appointment.
I'm going to report this.
Motion is second for two mineral appointments, as we've said, on Thursday, aye.
Aye.
Any others? Motion is two. Still have, uh, some events around for the, for the Christmas season, so, uh, if you're, uh, coming, uh, enjoy our community, our policy, this sounds good.